I'd like to call this special meeting to order. Sorry, Tim. Scared that one off. Official business to come before the board this morning. We're going to be having a discussion and possible action referenced pursuant to the emergency notice provision of ARS 38-43102D and J. Discuss and provide updates regarding the COVID-19. Pass measures necessary to prevent, slow, and mitigate the spread of COVID-19 within Mojave County. Provide a response from Mojave County to state and federal preventative measures and actions involving COVID ID. Implement procedures to provide updates and information to the public regarding COVID-19 and the county's response to it. Address and take action regarding county-held events and public events for the foreseeable future. And address and take action regarding Mojave County's employee policies and procedures in response to COVID-19. So I see our health director Denise Burley is at the podium, and I'm just going to turn it over to you right now and let you open it up and start the discussion.
Chair and Bishop, I'm sorry, there's one matter of housekeeping to take to address before we do that, if I could.
You're right, Ryan. Go ahead with that, please.
Okay, so I apologize. I've got to make sure that we understand why we're holding this emergency meeting, to comply with the open meeting laws. Normally, the open meeting laws require that we give not less than 24 hours' notice prior to the meeting to the public. There is an exception that allows for less than 24 hours' notice. In this case, Arizona Revised Statutes 38-431.02, paragraphs D and J, and that's the reason for it. It states, "In the case of an actual emergency, a meeting, including an executive session, may be held on such notice as is appropriate to the circumstances." And that's where we're falling that under. In this instance, the Arizona Court of Appeals has defined an emergency as "an unforeseen combination of circumstances which call for immediate action." In this instance, we have a waterfall, so to speak, of unforeseen combination of circumstances that have been happening almost one after another immediately that has culminated to this point, necessitating this emergency meeting. We all know, and I'm not going to go into detail, of the COVID-19 epidemic that has spread throughout the world. Currently, there are over 181,000 cases in the world, and that number keeps growing every day. Secondly, this was very much unforeseen prior to this, to have this meeting, and unforeseen that we would require this. For example, only five days ago, we learned from the World Health Organization that this was a pandemic. Only last week, sporting events and other events, cultural events, and other activities were completely shut down. Only last week did we find out many of these things that were happening. And most significantly, and the reason why we could not do that 24-hour notice is because what we learned on Sunday, March 16th, so that was yesterday, less than, oh, about 24 hours ago right now, was the CDC announced no gatherings or recommended no gatherings of 50 more people to take place for the next eight weeks. Also, Arizona Governor Ducey adopted the CDC recommendations, and the schools in Arizona were closed for the next two weeks. So all this information came all at once, and when it came on Sunday, obviously, we could not declare or could not get enough time to get the meeting, the notice sent out. And so that's why we need this special meeting. The other question is, why not wait another 24 hours? Why don't we give it out? In this instance, time is of the essence, and we'll hear that from our public health director, that things need to be done now and immediately. All of these events, cancellations, recommendations are coming at a very fast pace. And currently, Mojave County does not have confirmed COVID-19 cases, but we are surrounded by it. California to the west, cases in California, cases in Nevada and Las Vegas to the north, in Maricopa, Pima, and Pinellas Counties to the south. And obviously, we want to be out in front of it, and that's why we have our health director today to provide us that, and for the board here to be out in front of it and be proactive so that we can take all the necessary precautions and procedures. So really, time is of the essence, and that's why we don't want to wait, and that's why we need to do it with less than 24 hours' notice, and that's why the emergency is necessary. I can tell you, the clerk of the court has been absolutely diligent and worked absolutely incredible to get this all together. It was not easy. She did a very good job to get everything done, and when we determined it was necessary, we immediately put the notice on the website. It is on there for everyone to see. We did not wait. We did not delay it. We wanted to get out there immediately so that we give as much notice as possible to the public and to staff so that they be aware of what's happening so we can comply with the open meeting laws. And so for those reasons, that's why the emergency clause in the open meeting law is permitted in this instance. Thank you.
Thank you. And can I just verify that Supervisor Johnson is on the phone?
I'm here, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Denise.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the COVID-19 issues. We've tried to provide weekly updates to you to give you an idea of what activities the Public Health Department and some of our community partners were taking to prepare for any kind of infection in Mojave County. I do have a team over here that's available to really kind of help me respond to questions. We all kind of have our areas of expertise. There's so much information changing that I've brought them so they may respond to some questions also. I'll have them introduce themselves when they come up to the podium so you know who they are and their position within our organization. Due to the fluid nature of decisions at the federal and state level, and for that matter, even on the local level with some of the cities, and the spread of the disease itself, it's become increasingly difficult to actually provide you with the most recent, up-to-date information. So we want to take a few minutes of your time, if you wouldn't mind, to share what we know today. And thank you, Brian, for pointing out that we currently have no confirmed cases in our county. We do have testing going on in our county, so there's been a lot of questions about testing, and we do have that occurring in our county at the different facilities and in provider So to kind of give you an idea of what steps we're taking now to try to address some of the questions that are being asked by the public, we have updated our website as of Friday to provide more useful information, what we think is more useful to the public, links that would be helpful for different organizations, different agencies, in addition to what people can do, printable materials, things of that nature. We're also looking at opening up a call center where we'll have frequently asked questions that we can respond to on the spot with individuals, and we'll have potentially some of our staff, because of school closures, they won't be in the schools, so we're going to utilize those staff to help us with that messaging in the call center. Sorry, I have my bulleted checklist here to make sure I cover all my key points. The emergency declarations made by the federal and state governments can provide additional funding and resources to support mitigation efforts. Those changes often come on the healthcare side, meaning hospitals and that line of healthcare, not necessarily within our facility, in our department. Cities may decide to declare an emergency because they are unable to secure products. As you've probably, if you've shopped, you've probably noticed you haven't found toilet paper. You haven't found hand sanitizer. In some cases, shelves have been cleared of canned foods, things like that. So there are ways that, and those are just a few of the different things that the cities are experiencing, as well as the county. So those are declaring an emergency on their end can help them, when they run through us, get some supplies. And actually, Mike Browning can speak probably more eloquently about the county EOC and how that will flow in terms of requests, resource requests that we get from some of these outside Let's see here. So my authority. So during a federal or state-declared emergency, my authority really doesn't extend any further than what I normally have. The exception to that is that I can actually legally quarantine an individual who's not complying with our requirements. The county attorney's office has graciously developed templates for us, and motions for us, and a flow chart, which I have a copy of, if you're interested, to help us with that process if we need to use it. We're hopeful that we have voluntary compliance, because obviously, that makes it a lot easier on everyone. But we recognize that may not always happen, and so we're prepared to take it to that next level and require it through the courts. City leadership in Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, and Kingman have already begun to take steps to support social distancing, including canceling recreation programs for children specifically. That's not across the board. Lake Havasu City has chosen a slightly different path with their after-school, sorry, their spring break program. They've taken their K-6 program and divided it up into three groups, so it's broken down into little smaller chunks out of the 120 kids participating, and those programs are still being run there. But their aquatic center is closed. Bullhead City has closed out their community pool, and they have continued to take additional steps to try to mitigate any problems for the future. So those are steps that are being taken on a local level. I know Kingman has also canceled park recreation programs, softball leagues, volleyball leagues, things of that nature. So you've seen the guidance from CDC on mass gatherings, and Supervisor Gould, thank you for sharing with me that there was a statement made about limiting the number to 10. Currently, what we have for CDC recommendations is 50, of trying to limit mass gatherings to less than 50 people. This is important for the social distancing part. We're really, we're aware that there's a high likelihood that this is, that the disease is in our county already, and that there are people walking around with this, and we want to minimize the impact of that. And so we've encouraged social distancing for older adults, encouraged social distancing for those that have underlying medical conditions and health conditions where their immune system may be compromised, and they're unable to fight this disease as someone who might be healthy. Sorry, let me scroll down here a little bit. As you're aware, schools are closed until, well, through March 27th, so it's an extension for some of their spring break. Others were just coming back from their spring break. We were just on the phone with superintendents of school to find out a little bit more about what their challenges are, and we're specifically concerned about the care of those children in the absence of the school, because parents rely on that. And additionally, it's the food, free and reduced school lunch programs that actually feed many of these kids. That is their meal for breakfast and lunch in a day, Monday through Friday. So they are currently receiving instruction from ADE and ADHS regarding how to continue those programs. They also have, of course, larger concerns about how to pay their teachers, and sending homework home, and equity, and a number of other things. But as far as public health goes, we're really most concerned about the care of those children, and then also feeding, and getting those free and reduced school lunches available to them. So they're certainly working out some of the logistics of that, and still working with ADE and ADHS on how to provide those services in the absence of the normal school. So let's see here. I know that we're looking at this internally as well, and how that impacts our own county employees. So for example, school closures, after we get through this week, most parents had made plans for their kids for spring break. Some of those may have been canceled by cities and parks and recreation programs, but it's really looking at our internal policies around sick leave and our internal policies around our continuity of operations, and how do we maintain our operating procedures and processes so that we can continue to provide services to the community. So those will be, I mean, we just updated those, I believe, if I remember correctly, just in the last few months with Byron, so I'm hopeful that we've all, they're all fresh in our mind. We will be looking at opening the county EOC to try to assist with spreading some of the workload around, and also, they can assist us in different ways that we're unable to do. And again, Mike Browning can certainly speak more eloquently to how opening that county EOC helps the health department itself and the community in terms of communication and resources. What did I miss? Yeah. Okay. There, for testing, let me just kind of circle back to that, if you wouldn't mind, for a moment. Could one of you address the testing question, just in terms of the criteria that we're using and the labs that are available out there for the testing?
Hi, I'm Lynn Valentine. I'm the nursing services manager for the health department. One of the most frequently asked questions we're getting is about testing. Where is it available? How do I get it? I have, I'm sick, you know, I need to be, do I need to be tested? Right now, the testing is available through the Arizona State Public Health Lab, and that is coordinated through us, through our health department. If the patient meets the criteria, and there are four tiers of criteria that they must meet in order to be tested through the state lab. Just within the past week, some commercial labs have started testing, and that's LabCorp and Sonora Quest and the Mayo Clinic Lab. And some facilities are choosing to use those commercial labs. They do not have to go through us in order to do the lab testing through those commercial labs. So if a person who's ill and think they may have been exposed to coronavirus, or think they have coronavirus, comes into a provider's office, or into a hospital, or an urgent care, they may be able to be tested through that commercial lab if the provider's offering that testing. I know not all providers are offering the testing at this point. Otherwise, if it's a facility that is sending the tests through us, the specimens through, I'm sorry, the Arizona State Lab, and they have to go through us, they have to meet certain criteria. And that criteria, like I said, there's four different tiers, but it includes having a fever, some respiratory symptoms. In other areas, it says that they have to have been in contact with somebody who had COVID-19, or they traveled to an area where they had COVID-19, or other risk factors. And I couldn't list them all right here, but I can definitely, you know, get you a copy of that testing matrix. But we definitely are seeing an increase in the tests being offered. We are not notified of every test that is run, if they're run through the commercial labs. So we're often asked, how many tests are being offered, or how many tests are being done? And we really can't answer that because they don't have to go through us if they're sending them off to those commercial labs. Any questions?
So how many tests have gone through the county health department?
At this point, I couldn't give you an exact amount. I haven't seen the most recent today, but I can tell you, it's been, what would you say? Thanks, Anna.
I'm Anna Scherzer. I'm the epidemiologist with the county health department. Eight have been approved at the state laboratory through us. Two have not yet arrived, and all six of the others have been negative.
Okay. I'd spoken with the ER doc over the weekend, and he complained that he does not have the ability to order a test.
I think that would be up to the individual facility, what they've decided. I know some facilities have decided to go through the commercial labs, and others have decided to stick with the Arizona State Health Lab.
Do we know if the hospitals have implemented their emergency plans? And do we have anything to do with that? And I don't know that "emergency plan" is the correct word either.
No, I understand what you're asking. I'm honestly not sure where, I think some of them have activated their pandemic plans.
Okay.
So I would, I don't want to guess, but I would say that I'm sure that they have started at least implementing some parts of it.
Do they notify us when they have implemented that plan?
Not necessarily. We have been in regular communication with the healthcare providers and facilities, you know, giving them updates from the state, and yeah, they have, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head which ones have, where they are in the process, to be quite honest.
Thank you.
That is correct, yes.
My question to you folks is, do you have the figures for the mortality rate of those over 65 for the swine flu, for the SARS, for H1N1, and for the Spanish flu of the 1918? Do we have those figures available?
Available right now? No. But are they out there? Yes, you can find them.
Okay. Everything that I've read so far, that the real danger is those folks over age 65. I happen to be one of those, and I've heard rumors about that there may be some quarantine requirements for those folks aged 65 and over. Have you heard anything about that?
So there are recommendations because of that excessive risk, if you're over that age. There are some recommendations to self-isolate yourself. Quarantine technically means that you know that you have been exposed to it. So you're talking about isolation and quarantine. There is a lot of self-control in doing that yourself, if you feel that you're at a higher risk. And then also, there is some consideration in long-term care facilities, there following some pretty good guidance now to shutting down visitation and those types of things.
So are we taking special emphasis on those facilities that are long-term care, and those facilities in which citizens would be those that are compromised?
We are always going to recommend that the long-term care facilities and other places that reach out to those particular communities follow the guidance that's out there. We will always recommend that. And one of our concerns, and one of the things that we're doing in terms of mitigation, and in terms of quarantine and isolation, social distancing, is stressing the people who are most at risk, which is the older folks. Yes.
Okay. So you're following the protocols with those facilities?
Yes, and that is the approach. If that's what the evidence shows, if that's where you need to put the most emphasis, that's where you put it.
Thank you very much.
You mentioned something called EOC. Can you explain what that is?
Mike give that.
Good afternoon. Mike Browning, Mojave County Emergency Services Coordinator. The EOC is an opportunity that the county has to open up a facility. Normally, it's at the sheriff's office, but we've had it done over at Development Services and Public Works. And what it does is it allows us to utilize internal staff, as well as bringing outside partners, agencies like Red Cross Utilities, the fire districts, law enforcement, healthcare, and have those discussions during a disaster and preparations for a disaster on what we need to do as a community to better organize and coordinate those response needs. So by working towards this activity right now, it strengthens those small fire districts, the cities, the county response, and so that we're on the same page, functioning under the same guidance and operations plans that are developed. And it strengthens those communication needs that we need to have during this time. There are so many things being communicated from so many different levels, we don't need to lose that at the local level. So by having Public Works available, flood control staff, administrative staff, health department working together at an EOC setting, it gives us, you know, better opportunity to make sure what we're doing is well-coordinated in the response side of it. The other option we do have might be declaring a public health emergency and having a proper emergency declaration by the board, which would help with allocation of local funding, the cities' reimbursement costs possibly, as well as having some funding at the state and federal level as those dollars or funds become available in the future. So that might be something else to discuss and look at. Any other questions on the EOC?
Is that what you just said about the board declaring an emergency? Is that something that is happening through, is that being recommended? Is that something happening?
I did ask the State Department of Military Affairs this question this morning, because there's only, I believe, one county in the state that has done that right now. And typically, you usually wait till there's a threat, you know, that this is going to impact your community. But a lot of communities in recent times have been declaring those concerns early because the cost of preparation, the staff hours, the redirecting your staff to deal with that preparedness side does cost us dollars and funds. And if resources are needed, like the PPE that the fire districts and ambulance companies are needing, where do those dollars come from? So by doing that early, you're following state statutes' ability to help you with those dollars when you come, when those other dollars come by at the federal level to say, hey, what did you use those funds for, and, you know, when was certain things declared under an emergency at the local level?
And so at what point and who makes that recommendation to the board? Are there benchmarks, things?
In past events, like wildland fires, when we usually look at trigger points. On this specific problem, from the emergency management side, we don't have a trigger point yet. That's, I would leave that up to the health department to be able to make that decision for us. But on fires and floods, obviously, when we start seeing those impacts affect our daily operations, we typically have the county manager, we provide recommendation to them. The legal side is looked at as well on it, and then we, you know, draft a document that addresses those concerns, and then the chairman of the board reviews it. So I don't know if the county manager has any comments on past events that might be helpful, but we've done that several times in the last 15 years or so.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, generally, like what Mike has relayed, they would work with my office, and then we would make a recommendation to the chairman of the board, which that's under the chairman's authority. And if necessary, it would be placed on my county manager's report ratified by the board on an emergency declaration. The purpose would be to recover funding, but it'd also be a heightened sense. I did have a question. May I ask that of Mike and Denise real quick? In the old days, we had a, the health department, I thought, had an EOC itself. You all still have that capability?
Sorry, yes. We've actually opened up our Department Operations Center. That opened up at the very beginning of February, and that was in response to what we were seeing in China, knowing that it was going to eventually make its way to the U.S. So we started preparing at that point. And even at that point, we've already started tracking our time and our activities to make sure if there is an opportunity for reimbursement, that we have that documented.
And Madam Chairman, one of the things that we all need to recognize is the limitations on the health department and on emergency management. They're not flush with staff. In fact, one of the things in deciding or making a decision to go to a full-blown emergency operations center is the staff time that's taken away from their office. And what I would be inclined to recommend is that they carry out the functions of the EOC, but do it in your office so that you can share staff responsibilities and try to optimize the amount of staff that you have, and then emergency management would assist them over there when necessary, but not displace yourselves, because that would be self-defeating, in my opinion. The other thing that I believe is important is to talk about next steps, and where the county's going, and what we are trying to put in place. And I would like to know if it's possible to have an update on your conversation with these school superintendents?
Certainly, absolutely. Yes. Yes, I mean, from their point of view, there's a lot of logistical issues that they're experiencing. You know, they did ask on the phone whether or not we anticipated, whether or not the, you know, beyond March 27th, will the schools reopen? And the big question really becomes, when the disease enters into our community and we have positive cases, where are they? And where's the spread? And who is it affecting? And I think our, you know, the county or the state's response will be tied to that.
Okay. One of the things that I feel is incredibly important, and we've been talking to staff about this, is EOC fielding new information as it comes out. Because there's a disconnect on providing this board with the latest information. Ginny just sent me the information from the president's press conference that changed the social distancing and the recommending to not have meetings over 50 people to 10. And that's immediate information that needs to be gotten out. So I believe one of the most important things that the EOC can do is gather that information and work with our communications director to post it on the website and to disseminate it to our board as soon as practically possible. The other thing that I believe that is important is to take a look at how we communicate. And one of the things that's been recommended by our communications director is possibly have a weekly press conference where we invite the press. And that's something for the board to consider, whether you want to have that happen or not. But at least that would be proactive, and it would involve the health director interacting with the press on a weekly basis and emergency management interacting on a weekly basis, similar to what is happening in the federal government, to try to bring everybody up to date on the statistics and to disseminate the information. Next steps are important. We've got our HR department looking at some of the policies around the state for employees. In fact, one of the more proactive states is Pima County. So HR is looking at what Pima County just got their board to approve, to see what would be important to place in front of you all. And for consideration on, let's say, the issue with the schools closing and how we'll treat our employees on PTO and sick leave, how we're going to be addressing those issues and what we're going to be doing, and basically, how we're going to be treating those employees that don't have any leave. And we're also working with our provider, our SIR EBT person, and we touched base briefly with that today, trying to get our arms wrapped around the copays and the testing and all that stuff, and what involvement our insurance is going to have in that. And we'll try to get that information out to the board as soon as possible. The other thing that I think in your emergency operations center group, in a group, is to work with the departments to make sure they have reviewed all their practices and programs and see if we need to recommend terminating them. As you saw today, the library is being very proactive on shutting down programs and closing their meeting rooms, that are community meeting rooms that people can just go in and use so that we don't promote any spread of that. Also, I hope you all had a chance to take a look, as I did, with the very proactive activities that our attorney's office is doing. I think James Schottman and Matt Smith are doing an excellent job at taking a look at their policies and procedures. The sheriff is looking at his policies and procedures in relationship to his organization and the jail. And our chief, our presiding judge, just got off a call with the state on establishing what their priorities are. So the county, behind the scenes, is being very proactive, department by department. But we also need to take a look at emergency management, looking at the weaknesses and some weak areas, and helping those departments that may not be as proactive go ahead and do exactly what I just said. Take a look at their practices and programs and see if we need to look at limiting those. The other thing that I believe is important today is for, and we've got some of that earlier at the morning meeting, is to make sure Public Works and Development Services has clear expectations from the board on what they should be permitting and reviewing, along with the health department, in relationship to public events. And also, activities that are packed for Public Works in their parks. And whether we'll let those proceed, whether the board will let those proceed, or whether we want to have the health department monitor the situation and come back with recommendations to the board on approvals and where to go with there. But thank you, Madam Chairman, I appreciate the time.
Can I finish up with a couple of my questions? Because I want to, I just want to circle back to the public, not just the county, because I think that, you know, we have people tuning in. So, back to that. So we learned that the hospitals and the healthcare centers do have testing?
Yes, they do.
And when is that decided? I mean, if somebody just walks in and has symptoms, can anyone get the test? Or do you have to, it has to reach a certain benchmark?
It has to reach that certain benchmark, that testing matrix that they use, which Lynn spoke to. That's what they're using to kind of determine whether or not a person should be tested. And really, what we want to stress here is that we can't test everyone, nor is there a need to test everyone. If someone is not feeling well, stay home. If you are experiencing more extreme symptoms that require more immediate attention, seek that attention, absolutely. But really, we want to stress, if you're sick, stay home, and you'll get through those, through the illness, probably just fine. But we need to make sure that we don't take resources away from, meaning appointments and other resources, away from people who really do need them. Because if our EDs and our doctors' offices are being filled with people that just want to be tested, and they don't either have very limited symptoms or not really the symptoms, it's taking away appointments and time from those who really do need to be tested. So it's really important that we stress that so that we can get the right people in the door to be tested.
And then to piggyback on what the county manager Hendricks stated, all of our departments need to be looking at their procedures, and that includes the animal shelter. I had a conversation earlier with Mont Or, and we talked about how we're seeing things on both the east and the west coast, animal shelters should be being overrun with animals. Rescue organizations are no longer accepting animals, and people are abandoning their animals. So there's concern that those people being hospitalized that have this virus, they can no longer take care of their animals. And so shelters throughout the nation are coming up with animal directives so that these animals aren't being brought to the shelter and overwhelming those resources. So we need to be thinking about that time may come when we may have to stop accepting animals at our local shelter, because there just won't be any more room. So I think of all departments are thinking out of the box about things like that, that could happen if this continues past the two-week mark, that we're hopeful it'll start to diminish.
Madam Chairman, if I could ask a question of Mr. Browning? Mr. Browning, it looks like we're surrounded. California, Nevada, some in Utah, some in New Mexico. So we're suggesting social distancing. How are we going to do that with so many travelers coming through on I-40 and Highway 90 is free? If there is a continued escalation in the frantic movement of our citizens, we're going to be looking at Kingman, Arizona, Mojave County, and a lot of people coming from places unknown. My question is this to you. What is our current inventory for beds, blankets, hand sanitizers, masks, gloves? I know that we had an inventory prior to the last epidemic scare. Does that, do we still have that inventory on hand?
The health department does maintain some resources, and I'll let them answer to their initial stockpile that they have. We did ask the EMS providers and the fire service recently through the state to answer some of those questions and what they had in stock. Most of the agencies that responded had adequate supplies for normal response capabilities up through a few weeks or a couple of months. But as this changes that game, and there are more problems with that, our local resources are going to be taxed. We started this morning working with those fire districts and agencies to start to put together a procedure so that when they become threatened with that, how they're going to be able to request those resources through the county, up through the state, and the federal government, when those resources become available. So we're hoping to have that procedure finished tomorrow, but we have a few loose ends that we have to work with the state on to get that taken care of.
Well, to get back to my question, it's my understanding that we had an inventory of those items in the storage building that is just adjacent from the sheriff's office. And we had a huge inventory years ago of hand sanitizers, of extra cloths, blankets, a number of items. Do we still have those items available?
We do have a lot of those items still available, yes.
Okay. And you've got a current inventory of each?
We do.
Okay, great.
Yes. And we're looking at the resources, resource requests as they come through from different healthcare providers and how we can meet those resource requests already. And primarily, what you see is masks.
Well, what I'm afraid of is that Mojave County will be a magnet for those that are scared, because we are somewhat remote and our weather is very temperate. So we may end up with a huge population of folks from different places that are just scared to death and want to be safe. And that's my concern more than the outbreak of the local areas. So that's just a comment. But thank you. I'd like to have a copy of that inventory.
Yep, we can do that. Any other questions? Supervisor Gold?
Denise, if we, back to testing for a minute. If somebody's tested from a private lab, is that reportable to the county health department if they come back with a positive?
Yes, it is. And we're getting that through the electronic lab, yeah. So we get reports of that through our, it's called an ELR, electronic lab reports. So we are electronically notified that that person is tested positive.
But not on the number of tests?
Correct. Correct.
Hey, I just received an email, and that's from the White House Office of Intergovernment Affairs, and it has the president's coronavirus guidelines for America, 15 days to slow down the spread. So those are some really, really good tips that I think we could work off from when we're putting together what we're doing. And I just wanted to remind everybody that the health and safety of our residents and our employees is a paramount concern for us right here. And that's why we're having this meeting. There still have been no cases of coronavirus in Mojave County, which is good. We're still monitoring the one patient that was on the cruise, correct?
So that person is not in Arizona yet. So remember, we talked about that word, "planning." That was the key word there, is that there were plans in place to bring that person back to Arizona, and that has not occurred yet. So that person is still at one of the Air Force bases, I believe, under quarantine there. And I think we may have just gotten some more information today, but that's what we know right now.
Okay. Because I know that was a concern of a lot of my constituents, and, you know, a lot of people don't want the county involved in, or government involved in their business. But I think now is the time they do want their government involved in keeping them safe. So certainly glad that we are pulling all this information together, as we have been for the past couple of weeks. But thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
I've got a question about, so we've closed the senior centers. A lot of those people ate lunch and breakfast at the senior center. So how are we handling that?
Melissa, could you? We've been working on plans.
Melissa Palmer, Assistant Health Director. So starting on Friday, we received guidance from WACOG that we could go ahead and work towards providing those meals in an alternative fashion and still get reimbursed for those meals. So what we're doing is we're continuing the home-delivered program as it has been. And then for each site that had congregate recipients, they're doing a drive-through of sorts. So they pull into the parking lot with their vehicle, they check in with somebody, somebody brings them their meal, and then they drive away.
Okay. On the kids on the free and reduced lunch and breakfast program, what are we, do you have any ideas on how we're going to handle that?
Well, the schools just recently were notified of that on Friday, basically. And so they're still trying to react to that and how they will organize around that. So that's what school administrators are really trying to work towards. There are some school districts that have continued their free and reduced school lunch program. On the phone call, one school administrator mentioned that they were doing it this morning. They served 190 children breakfast, and they anticipate twice that tomorrow. So it was actually somewhat surprising to some of the other school administrators, so I do think that opened their eyes, and they'll start figuring out how that can work in their district alone, so.
It seems somewhat counterintuitive if you're going to close the schools, but you're going to have the kids come and pick up their breakfast and lunch? Maybe that's just me, I don't know.
Well, I mean, kind of going back to the science of school closures, though, and the fact that we don't have, right now, any cases in our county. If you look at the decision tree in the matrix that CDC has provided, that basically shows that schools should have remained opened.
The, I believe that the reason the schools are closed is from pressure from the teachers' union. I believe that's the reason that the governor, and that's my own gut feeling.
It could be.
Close the schools.
Probably tied to that also is there's been staffing shortages among the teachers and staff at the schools, and there's been a lot of parent concern.
Sure.
And so there have been parents who have pulled their children out of school as a precautionary method. And so there's all these concerns. And then also, consistency with some of the counties around us and states around us in looking at, Clark County had just made that decision to close their schools, and I think that just had kind of a trickle-down effect to Arizona.
Interesting, because on the funding side, we only count students twice a year, on the 40th day and the 100th day. Those are the only two days they have to be in school.
And that was of utmost concern in that phone call.
Generally, it is. Thank you.
So on that, you know, food type of stuff, so I've been getting comments from my constituents about, you know, a lot of the stores are now becoming more and more empty of emergency goods and things, and that it's the seniors and the people who can't get out every time they restock. And is there anything that people are talking about to help with that situation? I mean, I think that the communities have to work together on that. Again, I don't think that government is going to solve all these problems. We're going to have to go within our communities, we're going to have to let people take care of themselves. The idea, and that's why I keep hearing, is we're going to have to take care of ourselves. And I think that's what you said earlier, a lot of it is just taking care of your health, using common sense, you know, not just going by the guidelines of what the government is saying. Because one thing that troubles me, and I think some other people on the board, is that they keep kind of moving the goalposts, you know, 10 days, a week, 10 days. But I don't know, and maybe you do, what are the benchmarks there? Like, what are they looking for? At, you know, is it maybe just a few people who get it, or if no one gets it in this amount of time? I mean, what's the exit strategy on all of this?
Well, I wish I could speak to that more clearly. I think what they're looking at has been the pattern so far in other countries, because that's what they have to rely on, is looking at the spread, how it happened, what steps did they take to mitigate the problem? And did it work? Did it not work? And so I think they're using that information and data to try to make some of those decisions for our agencies. So, and, you know, and keeping in mind, we rely on the science part of it from CDC and other sources to help guide our residents in terms of their behaviors, you know, of washing your hands, covering your cough. And these are all things that we tell people regularly anyway, right?
Now they're paying attention.
Yes. Yes. So these are the things that we want to continue. In the absence of a vaccine, we really need to practice these good hygiene practices and also look at ensuring that people stay home when they're sick. And we know there are a lot of people with, you know, fabulous work ethics, and they just, they're that committed to their work, but we need them to stay home when they're sick, so.
Another thing on the agenda is, let's see, implement procedures to provide updates and information. and information to the public regarding COVID-19 and the county's response to it. And address and take action regarding county-held events and public events for the foreseeable future. I don't really like that term foreseeable future, but I mean, I guess that's all we have right now.
Sure.
So what are we going to do for that? I mean, it seems that public health is the authority. And so are you working with the other government entities, the local governments, the cities? So who is the, who is sort of the authority that the information will go through to make sure that we're all getting the same information and that there's not this panic of people getting different information?
Right, right. And I think that's where we're really trying to take some more proactive direction here. Updating our website so it has more information for the public, our frequently asked questions, the call center, looking at a kind of a direct line to the community so that they can call and get questions. Now, keeping in mind that call center is not a triage center for people with symptoms. That requires a clinical person to actually go through that with somebody. So we would be forwarding them on either to our nursing crew or to their healthcare provider in those cases. But I think that's kind of that next phase that we really need to ramp up and be a little bit more organized around and coordinated. I've been in touch with, so we meet every Tuesday afternoon via a teleconference call with all healthcare facilities in the county. We have them on a call. We relay all the ADHS information to them, anything that's new and changed. We listen to any kind of issues they may be having and we try to problem solve on the phone. We have now a weekly meeting every Wednesday with all the city leaderships. So mayors and city managers, as well as EMS, will be on those phone calls. And again, updates. It's just really updates, trying to get them more information. And because it's changing so frequently, we need to be on the same page. So they're making, on a city level, they're making decisions for their community. And that's, they look to us for some guidance, if you will, sort of what CDC provides us and ADHS. And then we try to have them in that position of being the decision-makers for their communities. There was a first question, I'm sorry, that you asked me. Communication was part of it, but the first part.
It's just about the county-held events and public events.
Yes, thank you. So that sort of goes to this morning's discussion about permitting events and things of that nature and that we take this precautionary method and approach, but ultimately you become those decision-makers about approving permits. And we rely pretty solidly on current data to try to make decisions, right, and precautionary methods moving forward. But looking at how we, so for example, we have no positive cases in our community, but tomorrow that could be different. And the next day, I mean, you've seen Clark County go from six cases to, does anybody know the answer to that? Okay. Yeah, I heard a number on a phone call, but since I can't confirm it, I'm not going to throw that out there. But it increased, short amount of time. So those are the things we have to look at to say, it's getting closer, you know? It was Washington and now it's, you know, how many miles there? And now we're at 90 miles. So we know it's, we know it's there. So when we talk about trying to create social distancing, it sort of sends that mixed message, as I mentioned this morning, about, on one hand, we want you to create social distancing practices, but on the other hand, we're going to hold a community event, which brings people together. So it's kind of a catch. We don't want, you know, we know the social and economic cost to making those decisions is big. We know it impacts communities. Toby Cotter from Bullhead City called me yesterday and, you know, the economic impacts to all communities is large. So it's a balance of trying to create a preventive model and approach it that way versus waiting until it gets here and then seeing a faster spread potentially. So I think that's when the president's making those changes. And in numbers, really, he's looking at how do we prevent and slow down that spread when it does get to your community.
Madam Chair, I've got another question.
Vice President.
I'm going to ask you to put your swami hat on for just a minute. We have Mr. Woods in the back of the audience there. He's the manager of the Mojave County Fairgrounds. How far into the future would you recommend that he suspend any activities at the Mojave County Fairground?
Well, if I'm following CDC guidance, that would be eight weeks.
Eight weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, great. That gives us some kind of an idea.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
If I read the boards correctly today, this morning, it seems, and it, being staff and having a takeaway, I would assume I have full authority to look at the policies and practices internally of our different departments, not including elected officials, because elected officials appear to be being very proactive, but I can make recommendation to them. But to look at stuff like the library, modifying their, exactly what you all saw today and, you know, stopping some of the practices that are now occurring and we have stopped. I would assume I have full authority to do that. On these events that are being held outdoors by our Parks Department, until things change, I would assume the board's wishes, taking away from this morning, is to go ahead and allow those to occur and as business as usual and maybe have some precautionary information put out for those events. As for the cities or special events, I would assume the board would want us as staff to allow the different cities and communities to make their own decisions on whether they want to move forward with those special events like parades and so forth and so on, and have those event holders held responsible for whether they want to continue to have those activities. That's what I believe I got gained from today.
Madam Chair?
I think you're correct.
I just want to clarify one thing that you said. You said that county events held outdoors. Are you talking about something in particular?
Yes, I am. One of the things that we looked at this morning was the Bluegrass Festival down at Davis Camp. You know, they said 300 people are going to be at that festival. That's one of the things that is permitted, I guess, or they've already got a use permit for Davis Camp. And that would be allowed to go forward unless there was an extenuating circumstance that we would need to bring back in front of the board for reconsideration. That's what I took away.
Well, that's not what I gathered from what we talked about this morning either. I mean, that was two months ahead. I mean, the decisions we make about what should go on will always pertain, whether or not we give them a permit or not. It's just sort of, you know, still going through the motions, but everything we decide about what's going to be held will still be that. So if we're still in this, God forbid, this predicament in two months, that Bluegrass Festival will not do it because no one's going to want to come anyway.
And I, maybe I didn't explain it correctly. Right now, they're permitted and the board hasn't taken any action to change that. And like we said, we don't have any cases right now. If there is extenuating circumstance and the health director comes to me and say, Mike, we need to take a look at all of our outdoor activities that the county's supporting, that would be brought back in front of the board so that you all could reconsider the situation and decide whether you actually want to move forward with it or not.
Right, and that's what I was thinking.
Or allow it to move forward.
I mean, because they were both either a month and two months away.
Yes.
But so if things change, I think some of these decisions are a little premature for the government to be making at this time.
And we've got an Easter egg event down there. They've got a, you know, they've got a full slate. They're doing everything they can to promote our facilities, so.
Any other questions? It seems like there's, I'm sorry?
I've got another one. Thank you. Denise, was the flu outbreak in 2011, was that H1N1?
2009.
2009.
Mm-hmm. H1N1.
Do we know how many cases we had in Mojave County and how many deaths occurred from that?
Good question. Hannah, do you have?
I don't expect you to know off the top of your head, but.
Hannah probably knows.
I think it was less than 1,000 cases. Deaths, we did not track specifically. If we heard of one, then we would have tracked it. And it was less than 10 that we happened to hear of.
Okay.
Roughly.
So those were not reportable to the health department?
Deaths?
Yeah.
No, cases are, but the fact that they died was not necessarily reportable.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I received a text message from Treasure Cox and she just wanted to remind everyone that Cornerstone Mission currently offers a to-go meal every day from 4:30 to 5:30 in case there, that could be an option instead of the senior meals in case that's discontinued. So thank you, Treasure Cox, for sending that to me. Oh, there she is in the back of the room. Well, you could have come up and said that, Ms. Cindy.
Okay. Chairman Bishop, I just got, and we probably all got it, that the president's coronavirus guide and there, this is how they're branding it, 15 days to slow the spread. And I'm reading it and it's all common sense kind of things that people can own, take, you know, take responsibility in their own lives for, just have a, you know, a hard time. I understand public health is public health. You know, I just, I don't want to be prematurely, you know, oppressive with it until we have all the information. So this goes back to why I thought we were having this meeting in the first place, to talk about how we're going to get the best information for people out there because they're getting it from everywhere.
Yes, they are. There's so much information out there. It's, I mean, we have trouble getting the information out in a sense that we can't combat all of the other information. We can't kind of compete with it all. And we're trying to be that trusted source of using science-based in our decision-making, looking at how we do this, referring to the science as far as CDC and ADHS and using those resources. But we also know there's other information out there. So we're just trying to our best to kind of utilize what's out there that's solid that we know and move forward with that.
Maybe this is a question for our PIO, but what does the county believe is the best way of getting the message that we need to get to our constituents out there?
Supervisor Angus, I believe we're going to have a press conference tomorrow.
Yes. Well, there are several ways, of course. I'm Roger Galloway, I'm the PIO. We are going to have a press conference here in this room tomorrow at 2:00 PM. And the local press will be calling in, asking the questions that they want. And we'll have this fine group back with us tomorrow as well because I thought they did a great job today explaining everything and that's exactly what we need to get out there. And the press is constantly calling us as well to ask various questions and what they want to get out to their readership or to their listeners or whoever's watching, et cetera. So we're trying to stay on top of that as best we can.
So a press conference for the press tomorrow?
Yes.
And then what kind of meetings are we going to have for citizens to ask their questions?
We should, I personally believe that that is something we should do in the very near future. I think this is a good way to start things off with the press calling in and what we discussed a little earlier, we'll open it up to the public as well. They can watch and listen to the press questions tomorrow and then we can go from there and see what is next and how it will work.
Maybe the board can discuss, or I don't even know if it needs to be discussed, possibly letting people in our own districts, you know, be responsible for getting the information from the county out to people in our district who, for some reason, whatever.
Certainly, certainly everyone in the individual five districts looks up to their supervisor to get information as well. And I'm sure each of you will be doing that to that to some degree, too, certainly based on what we've heard here today.
Right.
Some additional information?
Madam Chair, during emergencies, a lot of times, the Emergency Operations Center can set up a joint information center state. You see that a lot during wildland fires and past events. So we can explore that. That's where we bring the press together on a more timely manner so that we can provide that information to them as a whole, not so much a press release, but they're working together on a lot of different mediums to be able to share that information with the public. So when Byron, I have opportunity to speak with Byron, we can talk about that a little more with the county manager and explore how that might be an advantage for us to do that.
Okay, agreed. Okay, are you finished?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson has a question.
Supervisor Johnson. Wow. Supervisor Johnson, everybody's yelling for you, so go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Burley, I have some questions for her. I guess my first question would be that the CDC and the president are giving us the guidelines and what they're saying is that we're two weeks behind and that is why they're pushing these requirements now down to a 10-day or 10-person gathering. So should we, I know people are talking about we don't want to be impressive, but shouldn't we be more, more positive in the things that we're doing?
So, very good question.
I guess instead of, yeah, I guess instead of waiting for the first case to come, because by the time it hits, it's too late to institute these things.
Right. And I think that's why some of the decisions have been made, as you've seen so far around you, with event organizers, canceling events, soccer tournaments, sporting events, all that has really been, really designed and implemented to ensure that we reduce the spread and delay it as much as possible. So, you know, I'm at the mindset that we're a community, whether or not it's a county, a city, or a county, or, you know, a small community like Dolan Springs. And we all have to kind of do our part to help the community come out of this, you know, in a healthy way. So when we look at our own practices, we can individually do our own practices, but as a group, we have to make decisions that are going to benefit the community and not just single individuals. And so we're trying to kind of balance the rights of an individual with this preventive measures, these preventive measures that are really going to ultimately help all of the people in our community, but especially those most vulnerable.
I guess with the expediated timeline and person line that the president and CDC's coming out with, are we going to be having these meetings every day?
You know, this is, this is part of our issue in terms of trying to keep everybody updated is it's almost hour by hour. And it's hard for us to even keep up with getting the information and then making sure that we share it with all the appropriate people. So it's, I think having the EOC open will help us a lot in trying to make sure that we have those resources available to keep that communication line very fluid for the different groups that need to get it. But that is a.
The thing that.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
The thing that bothers me is I know Maricopa has closed their library and Maricopa obviously has a lot more medical resources than we do. To handle any kind of a problem that we get here with the spread of the virus, we're very limited on space at the hospitals or outside space or outside help without calling in the National Guard or MASH units. Would that be correct?
Right, yes. Our resources here in Mojave County are much more limited than Maricopa County, absolutely.
Hannah, could you speak to some of the evidence around closures as far as working and not working? Is that something you feel comfortable? Because that's been a question a long about, you know, especially around school closures.
So actually, you've already touched on the important ones and it sounds like you guys are already aware. The school closure is kind of a point of discontent because there isn't good, strong evidence that this particular virus is amplified by kids and they're not the ones at highest risk. So, you know, the school closure, that was one of. So, you know, the school closure, that was one of the things that, you know, we really weren't pushing in that direction, but yet here we are. And on top of that, you know, if my kids are home, I can't take care of them. Who do I send them to?
Grandma.
Those that are at high risk, grandma and grandpa. And so it's a, it's a bit of an irony there. Beyond that, they, they're just, it's too new, and they don't have real good, solid evidence of exactly what's helping the most. But self-isolating, the six feet is what a lot of people are talking about. You're talking about these big gatherings. It's not the fact that I'm sitting in this room. If I were to get it today, it would be from these ones right here. Not from any of you, not from anybody else. It's the folks who are sitting or really close to me, six feet away. Possibly surfaces, things that are on surfaces. But I think we get a little complacent and think that it's just mysteriously out there, and so I just happened to pick it up, where who knows? There's just no idea. No way, I probably got it from the person who was coughing next to me when I was sitting next to him. So I, I think that's kind of our approach. I, I don't really, I can't really address a lot of that intelligently because I don't think that they've really decided what all these closures are really, what impact they're going to make. Yeah, time will tell.
So I have a question. The, the City of Kingman has canceled all of their April meetings. Would it be your recommendation that, that we close our meetings to just live streaming meetings and maybe not open that up to the public?
That, that's one approach that you can take. The other thing is the personal responsibility. When I leave here, I wash my hands, take care of myself. I don't come in the first place. If I've got the slightest symptoms or suggestion that I might be ill, certainly not if I've been around somebody who I know who had it or traveled elsewhere. I should be isolating anyhow myself at my house. And then otherwise, you know, keeping your distance. They talk about carrying umbrellas around. If Mike's got an umbrella and I've got an umbrella, they're both open, we're going to be far enough apart from one another. So that's the other side of social distancing. It's not just avoiding everything and people. It's the reality of the disease and how it spread. If I cough or I sneeze or just talking up here, if I'm infectious, it's coming out of my mouth, and it's landing on your face. And that's not going to happen from this distance, but it might from a closer distance.
Right, well, we're all sharing the same marker from there at the podium, so...
Right.
So I don't want to, to encourage an overreaction, but, but then at the same time, you don't want to underreact as, as well, so...
Certainly, if you've got something where the audience is going to be those most at risk, then that's where a lot more consideration is going to hopefully go.
Supervisor Johnson, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. She's saying an awful lot about self-responsibility, and a lot of our people aren't responsible. And it seems like the ones that aren't responsible are the ones that usually have the disease or are passing on. And when this lady came down, she's touching the podium where other people have touched it, the handrails that come down. They're sitting in seats that haven't been wiped down, and who knows who's been handing the, the armrests. So I, I think we need to be a lot more proactive than we are and not take it so lightly.
That's true. And one of the recommendations, since you brought it up, is to ramp up your cleaning and your disinfecting. So as soon as this auditorium leaves, there should be someone in here disinfecting. Same thing in schools and other places, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ma'am, so what you're saying is children are not a vector for the disease?
Well, children could be a vector if they get it. They're not amplifying it. It doesn't seem that large groups of people are getting it from the children.
Okay.
And that's a little bit different because I think influenza can be amplified in child settings.
When, we, we homeschooled our children, and the first year when we had no involvement with other people, our rate of illness dropped dramatically. And then as the kids started doing more things with the other homeschooled kids, then we went back to getting sick again, it seemed like. So, but you're saying that, that they're not concerned about, or it's just not proven that groups of children end up passing it around and then put, bringing it to adults?
They have not, that has not been shown, that children are amplifying it. And, yeah, they're not a huge problem, it seems, in infecting others.
So by amplifying it, do you mean multiplying it? Or like passing it to one person, but passing it to two would be an amplification?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Just a couple comments and an idea or two. Most of the hand sanitizers that have been purchased by those folks that are anxious about this situation are bacteriocides. Would you remind those folks on our website and those other informational outlets that they need to be looking for something that will kill the, the virus? Clorox does make those products. Many of the products that you buy in the store are simply for bacteria. The second thought, if we are subjected to thousands of people coming to Mohave County, and they're infected with this disease, probably the only place I can think of in Mohave County that we could treat even a portion of them would be that of the fairgrounds that has about 20,000 square feet of space that can be utilized. It is heated, it is cooled. So that's just for your information. If you, if it comes to that, that's a location that's available. I can't think of any other locations throughout Mohave County that would, that would house that many people. Just, just some thoughts. But take a good look at the hand sanitizers and see what it'll kill.
Yeah, I think the recommendation is a hand sanitizer that has 60% alcohol is adequate. Yeah. And as far as some of those other sanitizers and stuff, if you've got those Lysol wipes and whatnot, they say you have to follow the directions. Flip it over and read those directions sometimes, and you might be surprised. A lot of them have to stay wet for 10 minutes in order to do what they say they can do. So, yeah. Bleach water, cheap, effective, wonderful for tons of things, not just this.
You know, they don't have to buy bottled water, water out of the tap. And if you're worried about it, boil it. That's what we used to do like 30, 40 years ago. Maybe it'll work now. Thank you.
Good point. Plenty of tap water in most places. Any other comments, discussion?
We might, after this is all over, we might want to put together a list of things that people, and this is probably already available, that people should have in their home. Like a basic stock for, if they have to hunker down for, for two weeks or something like that.
Like toilet paper?
Yeah. You probably don't need a 96-pack of toilet paper for two weeks, but you never know. There'll be a market for it. But we might want to put something together just as an advisory. And I'm sure CDC or the FEMA has some kind of a recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, FEMA does have a website, ready.gov. And there's been many programs put out there in the past. Just this last summer, State of Arizona put one out called Ready, Set, Go. And it's a little door hanger that has those types of information provided on it in the event that there's a natural disaster, and you may be asked to evacuate some of the things that are important for survival.
Sure, what should be in a go-bag and things like that.
So those items are available on state websites as well as at the federal level to provide that information.
Right.
I, I have one more thing.
One more?
One more thing. I touched on this earlier about some of the questions about the least vulnerable, the most vulnerable of us and them getting the resources they need. And I know the committee, the, the community will step up and, and get it together. But I've been asked, will the county or the city expend resources? You know, if they need kind of like a vehicle to deliver and things like that? Is that something that we could talk about, maybe? I mean, if I get sort of a plan together, would that be something the county would consider doing to help out with this sort of crisis? Well, I'm just, it's just an example, so, you know...
Food products?
Yeah, you know, things that people need that are, who are shut in, things like that. You know, through the food banks. I know the food banks are going to be, have a big part in this. So as we, it's going to have to kind of happen fast because apparently in Bullhead City, there is already some issues with that. And I hope Bullhead kicks in. But again, I just wanted to put this out here while we're having this meeting.
Dolan Springs and Meadview, they're already saying that fuel is a problem. They drive into Kingman, and there's no, no supplies that they needed, so they have to make two or three trips. I, I don't know if we'd want folks to depend on the county providing transportation.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that we would provide, I'm just saying that the organizations, if they should need something, like a vehicle to help deliver, would that be something? I'm not saying that the government should do that. I'm saying that these organizations, if they need something, would we be there to help?
May I step in?
Yeah.
We have a, again, at the emergency operations level in our EOC setting, we have a program called COAD, which is basically a lot of groups locally that get together, and they, they actually do that in disaster settings. So a community, something that's needed in the community, it's reported to the EOC. That COAD representative takes that, that item, and they can look at the resources that are available in the community to help fill or, or provide a service. So that's another item that the EOC could be looking at to, to help look at some different solutions.
This is the first I've heard of that. So how do we get that information out to the public?
Well, we would need to do like a hotline information so that when people are calling in with requests, if it, if the cities or other jurisdictions are having problems with resources, reporting that to the EOC Emergency Management so that we're aware of it. That situational awareness is important. You know, a lot of people, they look at some of the groceries missing at a grocery store, but they, you know, the store is still full of food. But, you know, they're telling this message in the community they're out of, out of services. Just this morning, Peach Springs reached out to the Red Cross feeling that they were out of food in Peach Springs. But, you know, that's not the case. So we need to be very clear on, you know, that situational awareness of information so that we can clarify those things. But again, if the communities are, are having impacts of that nature, having the county EOC open to collect that and, and look at some of our local options as well as reaching out to state and federal partners to be able to help us with that. And that EOC would, would be a conduit to help do that.
Thanks.
If I could.
Supervisor Watson, sure.
And I see the sheriff's in the back of the room, and this is addressed to him. Thank you, sir.
Of course.
For coming down.
Of course.
My question are, to what extent are you working with Mike Browning on, on planning with your department?
We have been working with Mike. I know that our search and rescue division's been talking with him. We're actually having a meeting after this to go over what we've learned here today. And I'm glad you called me up, Supervisor Watson, because I do have something that I, I need as an elected official. I have to take something away from this. And I think what we're getting is great information. I think we're sharing information, but there's 207,000 residents that aren't here right now. What I would love to see is a centralized point, and this is a Health Department issue. I think that if we had, and this is the 21st century, if we had an ability, which we do, to put this into one area on our county webpage to dispel rumor. Rumor is dangerous when you're dealing with potential panic. I heard that there's 15 cases. No, it's 200. We don't need that. Now, we all in this room heard today, we haven't had one case in Mohave County yet. Public needs to know that because they don't believe that. All right, so I would love to see a centralized page that every department can point to. When they say, Sheriff, what's going on? I want you to look at the Health Department page. I, too, can review it, so I have the same information that we're sending out to the board today. So I'm hoping we can get something like that going. But yes, we're working with the EOC, and we're all in. We're all in. I'm just not going to buy into any premature panic. I won't do it.
And what additional resources do you anticipate?
Well, we're going to base that on the need. I mean, if it comes to it, we're going to need fuel. Fuel's going to be a big thing. Food's going to be a big thing. I anticipate if this goes south to the degree that it becomes unmanageable, we're going to pull in a lot of volunteer resources, and we're going to have to take care of these people. So I just, I pray that it doesn't go to, in that direction. And I think a lot of it is sharing information early.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Before he gets away.
Sheriff? Supervisor Gold?
Anything special going on in the jail?
Actually, yes. We have already limited certain inmate contact. We're going to be shutting down our work release programs, exterior work release programs. And we're waiting, and of course, my jail commander speak, can speak on this better because he's been in contact with the courts. We're trying to find out to what degree the court system is going to limit contact. And once we know that, it will greatly aid us in what we're trying to accomplish. Fortunately, we have the ability to do a lot of our internal management via the computer, you know, visitation, things like that. But yes, we're definitely trying to minimize the in and out of the jail. Did John, Don come down? I'll let Don tell you.
So, good afternoon. One of the things that we've tried to do is share information with our inmates. The one thing that they don't have is access to social media. And they probably don't watch the news as much as they should. So they rely on the people that they reach out to by telephone. And sometimes they've gotten bad, very bad information. So starting probably close to two weeks ago, I started issuing announcements just to keep the inmate population up to speed with what's really going on. And at the same time, monitoring some of their outgoing phone calls to listen to how well our message is being received and to pick up on some of the rumors. And it was a wise decision to do both, to issue announcements to them and then to listen to the feedback. Because we've been able to dispel a lot of those rumors to the point where most of the inmates now are sick of receiving my messages, and they're largely not discussing it with their inmates or with their family and friends on the outside. What we are doing is the last week or so, we've taken the opportunity to do a thorough cleaning and disinfecting of the entire jail. Like I said, about 10 or 12 days ago, we started working with inmates and encouraged them, reminding them of the good hygiene practices that they need to do. We've issued the extra soap so that they could wash their hands, extra cleaning materials so that they could keep their housing units in their cells clean as this has moved on. We continue to stay in touch with the Health Department. We implemented a new screening tool for all our incoming arrestees in conjunction with what the CDC has issued. We have identified one inmate who's, who's come in over the weekend, and she's hitting some of the symptoms, not all. But we're going to do the testing. We've kept her in isolation. We are working, we've actually found a way to streamline some of that process. We don't have any huge concerns. We're doing this more as just our own edification. But we've kept this inmate isolated from others. She's an inmate that we can't release to the community right now. She's wanted in about two other states, plus a serious felony case here in Mohave County. So she's going to be with us. We're working with our healthcare provider for the jail. We have a plan in place. It's kind of a rough plan right now because, as you know, everything is changing. It's just the course of us having this meeting, things are changing. New information is coming out. But we do have a large area that we can use for isolation if we need to, aside from the negative pressure rooms that we have in the jail. We have been communicating with all of our stakeholders across the county in working out in-state transfers of inmates to include with the Department of Corrections. We're working with the county attorney's office next to start looking at some of our out-of-state extraditions and to limit those to the, the ones that are most necessary so that we can slow down some of this activity that's going on. Beyond that, we've just tried to educate, stay in the loop with what's going on, and just practicing the, the good hygiene practices and reminding all of our inmates with that. So so far, everything is going well. And we just stay in communication with, with everybody. Right now, the big decision that we're waiting on the courts, a lot of what the jail does ties directly to the courts. They're going to be limiting some of their activity, postponing things out for 30, 45, 60 days. So we continue to work with them, working with the county attorney's office. And we're just trying to keep it as much as we can to business as usual, but being safe at the same time.
So if they slow down in the courts, that's going to stack out more inmates... So if they slow down in the courts, that's going to stack out more inmates in the jail, I would assume?
It, it may, but at the same time, we're working with the, the County Attorney's Office, and they're going to look at some of perhaps the low-level offenders that we currently have, that they might try and do an OR release, and any of the new ones coming in, taking a close look at those, so that we can try and keep the jail population down in case there is a surge, or if there's a need to, to branch out and do some isolation. The court commit stuff, we're working with the courts and the County Attorney's Office. Work release is, is being suspended. We're just looking at everything.
Thank you.
Let me touch on that real quick.
So, Don, I just received a email from Judge Gertler, and he said that they attended an emergency telephonic conference with the Chief Justice earlier, and the chief will be issuing an administrative order, according to Judge Gertler, this afternoon that suspends all jury trials unless trial is already underway, and that'll be for a two-week period to match the closure of the governor's office. The chief reiterated that the courts will remain open and session. We are all taking necessary steps to conduct as many hearings by video or telephonically as possible. Given the special session of the board this afternoon, I felt it appropriate to let you know that the courts will remain open as directed by the Supreme Court, but that all jury trials will be continued. The chief anticipates additional emergency conference calls, and the 14-day suspension may be extended depending on what occurs over the next 14 days. So that's your update from Judge Gertler.
And we were, before Kip Anderson left, he told me that that was something that they're just waiting on that order from the State Supreme Court.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to add, too, we are certainly trying to minimize the, the in-and-out process, and I'm very pleased with what our jail commander and the staff is doing, because it's not easy. That's a lot of inmates you're dealing with, and Supervisor Gould made an excellent point. You start postponing cases, and the backlog becomes critical very quickly. One thing I did want to point out that Don failed to mention, with the work release status, say somebody's in jail now, and they're, they're out every day going to and from work and coming back in. We're trying to get those folks completely released, scheduled out 60 days down the road to get them back in to do their time. So there are things that we, we can do, and we're going to be reaching out to all local authorities after this meeting and ensuring that misdemeanor bookings are not, not allowed unless absolutely needed. So those are things that we're looking at. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
So do we need a second meeting tomorrow to follow up on any of this? We have the press conference scheduled, but another meeting of, with the Health Department?
I wouldn't think so, unless some breaking information comes out.
And if I could add, Chairman, I would just, if, if at all possible, let's try to do the 24-hour notice. I mean, this was an extenuating circumstance, why we called this emergency meeting, but in the future, if we can try to do the 24-hour notice, let's try to do that, so. But, but obviously, if an emergency comes up, if something happens, then we'll, then we'll utilize the emergency section again, but for the most part, you know, if you wish to hold meetings, let's try to do that 24-hour notice and follow that, follow those procedures.
Okay.
If I might mention one last thing real quick. At the end of every day, we put a notice on there about our, the number of cases that have been confirmed in our county. We want to keep that updated, so we certainly recommend that people go to our webpage, and there's a link on the county homepage now for that. So trying to give people that most up-to-date information, at least on cases.
And that's MojaveCounty.us. All righty.
Does the Health Department have their own address?
It's under the county's webpage.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. There's no further business or discussion? We're adjourned.